Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Halton City Council Meeting for February 9, 2002. Welcome to all of you who are here with us in council chambers, as well as those who are watching on HCTV. As all of us are keenly aware, this is the week of the anniversary of September 11, 2001. And I think there probably is a lot of emotion in all of our lives as a result of what happened a year ago, and now with the upcoming anniversary of the attack on America that occurred this time last year. Might give us something extra to think about, a little bit of extra emotional intensity, as we come now to offer the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag of this great nation led by our mayor pro tem, Phil Jennings. If you would, please stand.
As the mayor has stated, it is the normal custom at this time for us to offer a prayer. We're slightly more than 36 hours away now from the observance of that one-year anniversary of the date that will live on in infamy in the hearts of the American public. At this time, would you join me in a moment of silent prayer for the thousands of American men and women who gave their life on the 11th of last September? Amen.
Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
It is my pleasure tonight to make a presentation to the National Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month, which is the month of September. We were contacted by this group about a month ago, and it's my pleasure tonight to make this proclamation. I think we have someone here from that organization, Ms. Jones, or Ms. Pearl Jones. Would you care to join me at the podium, please?
Hello, Karen White. How are you?
Welcome to Halton City.
Thank you so much.
From the office of the mayor of the city of Halton City, this proclamation. Whereas for the last, for 31 years, the Greater Fort Worth Chapter of the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America continues to provide community-based outreach programs and services that promote health and healing for families impacted with a sickle cell disease condition. And whereas an estimated 70,000 Americans have sickle cell disease, and an estimated 3 million Americans have sickle cell trait. And whereas 1 in 2,500 residents in Tarrant County have sickle cell disease, and 1 in every 80 carry the genetic trait which predisposes their children to be born with sickle cell disease. And whereas sickle cell disease affects all of us regardless of ethnicity, it is more prevalent among descendants from Africa, Europe, Sicily, South America, Mexico, the Mediterranean, the Caribbean Pacific Islands, India, and Saudi Arabia. Now therefore, I, Calvin White, Mayor of the city of Halton City, and on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby proclaim September 2002 as National Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you. Ms. Jones?
Thank you so very much, Mayor.
Would you like to address the council from over there?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor White. Good evening, members of the council for the city of Halton City. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, we consider this an honor tonight to come before you to accept this proclamation. I, Pearl Jones, Executive Director, on behalf of the Board of Directors of this fine organization, say thank you very much. This time in history, as we all know, is a very sensitive time. There are persons sitting here tonight who may not know anything at all about sickle cell. Some of you may have heard that it only affects African-Americans. My answer to you is that that is incorrect data. But we are so very glad to be here. This is a step that says greater awareness is needed everywhere when it comes to health and wellness for all people. On behalf of our group, we say thank you very much, and we hope we can come again. Have a good evening.
Our second presentation tonight is to be made by the Beautification Board. At the last council meeting, we started a process that will take us for several months at each council meeting to feature one of our boards and commissions, and give them a few minutes to tell us a little bit about who they are, and what they do, and some of the accomplishments they have made. And tonight, it is the Beautification Board. This presentation is made by the chairperson, Betty Porter. Ms. Porter, would you like to come forward at this time? And feel free to introduce other members of the Beautification Board that might be here, and anything else you'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the time to come and talk about our board. We have one of the most active boards in the city. We have some very dedicated volunteers, and a lot of them are here with me tonight. I would like to introduce them if they could stand, please. Mary Spencer is a board member. Denise Ford, Diane McGee, and Debbie Geltmeyer, they came just to support this organization tonight. Thank you, ladies. And our coordinator is Fran Burns, and her assistant is Lisa Newsom. They are both employed with Halton City. If you will, direct your attention to the south wall. We have a little program that will go through, and I'll attempt to explain some of the slides to you. This photograph is a picture of our Liberty Garden that is planted down in Halton Road It's in the shape of a flag, and you can see it's red, white, and blue. It was planted in memory of the people who died in New York City last year. Some of our programs, we try to beautify the city. We revitalize blighted areas. We promote clean environment. We try to improve the quality for all life, for citizens, and encourage business in Halton We have a lot of partnerships, but one of the ones we are most proud of is Keep America Beautiful. We've been affiliated with Keep America Beautiful since the mid-'80s. Another partnership we have is with the National Tree Trust. Every year, we receive 300 seedlings from the Tree Trust. They're sent to us free of charge, and the only requirement is that we give them away, we don't sell them, and that they be planted on public property. Another one of our partnerships is with Keep Texas Beautiful. We've been members with Keep Texas Beautiful since 1986. We have twice won the Governor's Community Achievement Award. We win a Sustained Excellence Award quite often, and we've won the Media Award twice. Once was this year. You may remember a couple of weeks ago, I was up here doing a presentation to David Soriano, our communications expert. Every year, the Texas Department of Transportation gives away $1 million to nine-winning cities. There are over 500 cities in the state that tries to win part of this money, and we are put in categories based upon our population. And we have won that twice. The first time was $60,000, and the second time was almost $250,000. And this money is in the way of landscaping in our city. The first time, we used it up on Denton Highway in front of the chamber on the medians up there. And if you'll notice the next time you go by, we're working on those again, trying to make them look a little better. And then the second time we won was down on Belknap in front of the BISD Administration Building on the medians there. Some of our local partnerships are with the Birdville Independent School District. And in this photo, you can see, this building is down on Belknap, and the art students from Halton High School. In 2000, the board painted the building, and then 2001, the art students put the mural up there. They sponsored a contest for someone to design the mural, and I'm sure you've noticed it, it's a buffalo scene, and you can guess why that Halton High School wanted that. We are also members of the Northeast Environmental Team. The team is made up of four cities, Halton City, Richland Hills, North Richland Hills, and Watauga. We work very closely with the school district to promote environmental awareness in the school system. We also work with the Birdville Council of PTAs and the Northeast Chamber of Commerce. We have a partnership also with the North Central Texas Council of Governments. We have, for the past three years, won a grant to sponsor our, one of our trash pickups. And this year, we won it again, and it runs for two years. And we've also put in a lot of information where we could acquire monies to enhance our study center, which is where this photo is. We received the free mulch from John Davis Tree Service, and we use students to help us mulch the trails down in the study center. And if you've never been down there, you need to go and visit it. It has its entire ecosystem down there. One of the teachers from the school district recognized it. There is water, there's marsh, there's prairie, there's hardwoods, and there's a great big shaded area where we have a lot of trails that have to be mulched, and there's a lot of poison ivy down there. So the trails and the mulch kind of help keep the poison ivy down. In our community leadership, every month, our Beautification Board members suggest businesses of the month, and these businesses are voted on by our board. And once a month, we visit that business and give them a proclamation stating that we're glad they're in our city, and that they keep their grounds and their building presentable. We also give away a Community Pride Award. That award is given to an organization, or a church, or some type of entity other than a business, so we could give away a different kind of award. And once a year, we sponsor Public Works Appreciation Breakfast. If you're using a lot of volunteers, sometimes there's some things that volunteers can't do. And we have to depend on city utilities and city employees sometime to help us with some of our larger projects. So once a year, we want to appreciate all those people that help us, so our board members provide a breakfast or a lunch for all of the members of the Public Works in Halton In the area of education, we have been doing a lot of Christmas decorating. I know you are aware of this. Every year, we have a tree decorating contest for elementary schools in our city. We have purchased, I think we owned six artificial trees, and the schools can enlist to decorate a tree with recycled items, and then those trees are voted on, and that school wins a $100 gift certificate, or a $100 cash prize to be used to build their reading gardens or some type of environmental awareness in their school. One of the things that we do with the schools, every year, we put together what we call our BEEP book, Beautification Environmental Education Programs. And these books are made by our volunteers. All the pages in them are put together by volunteers, and we give these to all the teachers in the school district. It has all our programs that we go through every year that involve students from the school district. So that, these have become really popular. We've had to double our amount that we made this year because we ran out every year. But we've also bought a new mascot this year. I'm sorry, you passed up the, that's okay. The, up in the right-hand corner, Ben is our new mascot. His name is Beautiful Environment Needed. And I already talked about the trees at the bottom, okay? In our field of education now, we give away a Clean Campus Award twice a year. The photo in the bottom right is at the Environmental Study Center. At the study center, we also sponsor Enviro Fair and Enviro Camp. Oh, I'm sorry, the Enviro Fair is held at the Birdville Fine Arts Complex. The Enviro Camp is a three-day camp. It's held every year in June. It's really hot, but we have a lot of hands-on learning projects for kids, and the three-day camp is very inexpensive, and we've had a lot of good response with that. In public awareness, once a year, we print what we call our Reflections Newsletter, and it's just an informational newsletter about what our board is doing. On our cable channel, our local-access cable channel, we do a program called Environment Today, where we try to inform the public of different environmental issues that they need to be aware of. We have a public service announcement. We do, we sponsor each year a tour of lights in Halton City. The Fort Worth Tea Bus Service comes into our city. I think last year, we had 11 buses that were full. They stop at the rec center, and Santa Claus talks to them, and that's a big, a big project. We use a lot of volunteers to do that. And then our Neighborhood Decorating Contest, we've been doing that since the mid-'80s, and the city is divided up into sections, and our board members drive around every street in this city sometime in December and choose houses that are decorated based on criteria that we have put together. This past year was our first year for Dickens on Broadway. That's what these photos are. We held it up at the Recreation Center here on Broadway. It was very well put together. Lisa Newsom did a lot of work on that. We had a big, big response. I know I taught children how to make one particular Christmas ornament, and I know I made 5,000. It seemed like it, anyway. But we ran out of materials to make them with, so we had to quit. So there was a lot of people there. It was very popular. Some of you may have noticed, oh, I'm sorry, I missed this page. Our, I was fixing to talk about something else. But I know you've noticed the Adopt a Spot signs on the roads. We have, our board has adopted the area from, on Denton Highway, from 820 all the way down to Broadway. And once a month, we go out and pick up the trash on both sides of Denton Highway. And every year, once a year, we sponsor the Great American Cleanup, which is in conjunction with Keep Texas Beautiful. The first item on here is also very popular. It's our Butt Mobile. If you attended the Fourth of July Parade that Mr. Williams worked so hard on, we drove our Butt Mobile in the parade. There you can see, we were giving away litter bags and "Don't Start Smoking" bumper stickers. The car is covered entirely with cigarette butts that we have picked up on the highway. It's a red, white, and blue theme, and it's covered with something waterproof, and it's very popular, but it really doesn't smell very good when you have to ride in it. Every year, we sponsor employee recycling, Clean Your Files Day, Dumpster Day, which last year was, it was more than we expected. We filled 17 of those big 30-yard dumpsters, you know, the roll-off kind. We filled up 17 of them in two different sites, and it was pouring down rain that day. We also have been a part in promoting the transfer station here in Halton City. This photograph is a picture of our Christmas tree mulching program. We sponsor this every year. Mr. Davis mulches our trees for free, and then he loads up, or our Public Works people load up the mulch and take it to an area where it's given away to citizens. If y'all were not aware of that, you can pick up that mulch anytime you want it and use it in your yard. I use it in mine, it works great. We also are a part of the Birdville Independent School District Clothes Collection. Once a year, we collect clothes from elementary school kids, and that's a lot of work. The last time I helped with it, we filled two pickup loads, bags of clothes in the back of the pickup, as high as they were allowed to drive down the road, and it was, it was a lot of work. We just finished our litter-free football at the Birdville Stadium, where we give away, we haven't done that yet, okay, never mind. We're getting ready to do that. Okay. We give away litter bags in the stadium and try to get them to put their garbage in a litter bag instead of in a seat or on the floor or something like that. We also sponsor a Free Landfill Day one time a year. Okay, Adopt a Spot. We have probably about 22 citizens that have adopted spots in the city that they take care of. That means they pick up the trash, they might mow it, they might plant flowers, they might do anything that they see fit to make it look better. We also have a memorial tree program, where we, we have about 50 trees so far, where you can purchase a tree to be planted on public property, and it will be designated in the name of someone, a memorial that you choose. This is a picture of the tree farm where we go, when we get the trees from the National Tree Trust. We go there, and we use Birdville students, or sometimes community volunteers, to pot all 300 trees. And this area is up on Garland Street, and we have a gardener that has really been taking good care of it. And right now, we have about 200 trees, I think, up there that are going to be used on public property. We are also involved, like I said earlier, with our Liberty Garden. Wednesday morning at 8:45, we're going to be having a memorial service for, in memory of 9/11. It's at, on Halton Road, right down here. Y'all know where Halton Road Park is. We acquired a huge flagpole, and we're going to dedicate the flagpole in memory of all these people, and it's planted by the Liberty Garden. We are involved in the Belknap Street Improvements. We have a STEP grant that's currently, we're waiting on the completion of, or the beginning of. We also have drawn up plans for entry signs into our city, and we have a lot of ongoing projects that we do. I would like to personally thank the, the city council, and especially Mr. Williams. He attends our meetings, and he, at one time, was our liaison to our board, but we don't have a liaison any longer, but he still comes when he can, and he has been a great help to us, and I appreciate that, John. Thank you very much. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time, and if anybody has any questions, I, I would be glad to answer them.
Members of the council, any questions for Ms. Porter? I believe there are none.
Okay, thank you.
Normally, five minutes is allocated for these presentations. Ms. Porter took all of her five minutes, but I will tell you this, it takes a while to describe what it takes thousands of hours to do. So, Ms. Porter, thank you for your presentation, and however long it took, we needed to see and hear what the Beautification Board does. Councilmember Williams, as a person who spends a lot of time with that group, any comments before we move on?
Well, I found somebody that can out-talk me, but no Betty and the, the entire group and the staff liaisons and stuff. I really enjoy y'all letting me be a part of that. A few years ago, I was put on that, and I thought I was put on there as punishment, but once I got on there and they showed me what they really do, I got excited in it. It gives you a whole more, whole new outlook on life about, you know, you're pulling McDonald's, you get your Coke, and you take your straw and throw it out the window. I don't do that anymore. I throw it in the floorboard and make my son vacuum it out, so. Just leave it in the car, put it in the trash when you get home, and just do your part to help pitch in, because they do a lot of work and a lot of volunteer, and they made a tremendous difference in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, Ms. Porter, thank you. I failed to acknowledge a couple of elected officials from another jurisdiction here in the area that are in attendance here tonight. Wanda Strong, immediate past president of the Birdville Board of Trustees. Wanda, you want to raise your hand so we can see. Most of us know who you are, but I want to be sure everyone knows you're here, and we appreciate you coming tonight. And Sherri Dunn, Vice President currently of the Birdville Board of Trustees. We appreciate, appreciate both of you ladies being here tonight and joining us. I know y'all don't get to attend enough meetings around budget time, and we are, we're glad you came out to, to be here tonight. We move now to the Consent Agenda. That consists of items number three, four, and five. Gentlemen, I'm in line for a motion regarding the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. May we pass the Consent Agenda?
Councilmember Jennings?
For a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve items three, four, and five. If you will, register your votes, and that passes by unanimous vote. And what we have just done, for the benefit of those of you who may not be aware, there are certain items on our agenda each time that are very routine, and rather than act on them individually, we put them all together and, in the sake of efficiency, address those items all with one motion, and that's what we've just done. So the city manager is, by this action, is authorized to move forward and implement the, these items in, that, that we've just approved, as has been recommended. We come now to item number six. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Torres, our city manager, I think you have a comment or two to make. Before he does that, if you're looking at your agenda, I want to point out the fact that this is a public hearing, and we'll be inviting comments from those of you in the audience in just a moment, not only on the 2002, 2003 budget, but also on the tax rate. So please remember, you can speak on either or both of those, the budget and/or the tax rate. Both of them are the subject of this public hearing. Mr. Torres?
We felt it appropriate to make a little upfront comment prior to probably some comments from the public. I think the anticipation is tonight that there will be some of you that will want to speak on the matter of the SRO program that, that you're probably well aware of. For those of you who are not, SRO is, what does SRO say?
School Resource.
School Resource Officer. I know what they are, but. The school resource officers in years past have been provided by the city of Halton City and have worked within the schools. For the past several years, I guess, we've had three resource officers assigned to various schools. And due to some budgetary constraints that the city has gone through this year, as, as well as the school district, in an attempt to, to cut back and, and just rethink what we're doing and where we're putting resources, the decision was, was made to notify the school district that we would no longer be able to provide those resource officers free of charge to the school district. And that decision is to be effective October 1. In the last several days, there has been quite a bit of discussion and conversation about the possibility of, of taking a look at that, potentially negotiating some kind of an agreement between the school district and the city. Specifically, that conversation has been between the superintendent and myself, and we just wanted to let you know upfront that there is ongoing discussion, and really, the issue is not yet resolved. However, any action that the council may take tonight will not be, pertaining to the budget, will not necessarily be focused on the SROs, because as it pertains to the budget, there's still the second reading that'll come up in two weeks, and if there is any kind of change that needs to be done, we would make that change at that time. So tonight, we just would like to hear from you, any, any comments you might have pertaining to SRO. to SROs or, or any other aspect of the budget, but we just wanted to let you know upfront that the matter's not yet resolved and there is ongoing discussion.
Okay, anything further from you?
No.
Does Mr. Alfred have a presentation to make at this time?
Protect, no, we're just going to open it up for the public hearing.
Okay. So, because this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on, as our city manager has just said, not only the SRO issue, but any other item relating to the budget or the tax rate, is encouraged to come forward. Now, let me, let me say just a couple of things before we open it up completely. Because this is a public hearing, there is not a need for you to have filled out one of the appearance before the city council cards. We do have one that was filled out and Ms. Geltmeyer, you had filled this out to address item number 10 and that is a little further down the agenda when we will take action. Would you like to address it now during the public hearing portion and, okay?
Not necessarily first.
You have, you have the option to be first if you'd like because you took the time to fill this out. If you'd like to, to come up later, we can do that.
That's what I get for filling out.
If you would give us your name and address for the record and anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on the subject, you'll be granted five minutes to address the council regarding item number six. Ms. Geltmeyer?
Good evening. My name's Debbie Geltmeyer. My family and I live at 5712 Starlight Drive. And I feel so strongly about this, I had to type this out, so pardon me for just reading. First and foremost, I am a concerned and involved parent. I currently serve on the Halton High School PTA Board. I'm a member of the BISD Teaming for Excellence in Education Committee and I serve as an officer for two Halton High School Booster Clubs. I am currently on the Halton City Beautification Board and have served on the Crime District Tax and the Bond Election Committees. I say these things because my family and I contribute to our community and we feel that you, as our council, have let us down. I am here to speak about the budget cut which will eliminate the school resource officers in Halton City. I think that this decision is yet another example of the council's lack of communication with the Birdville Independent School District as well as evidence of a complete and total disregard for the welfare of the students who are educated in Halton City. Not only have you allowed hundreds of apartments to be constructed which have overcrowded our schools and put a huge burden on BISD, you have now made a hasty, callous decision which will adversely affect the over 3,000 students at the campuses which currently have a school resource officer. It is understandable that it may be necessary for Halton City to consider ways to lower the cost of the SROs to this city, but it should be done in cooperation with BISD and taking into account what you just said, I understand, but I wrote this earlier today. I believe that you should work with the BISD with plenty of time to work out an arrangement to continue the SRO program, not to announce a decision like this with barely one month's notice. Senator Kay Granger stated that programs such as the school resource officers bring a measure of safety to our schools. As she announced the federal grant to Richland Hills to fund an SRO officer for their two elementaries and one middle school, now you expect us to accept the fact that our high school and two middle schools must do without. Our son has told us that the officer's presence on the campus gives him a feeling of security while at school and I know he is not alone. The fact that you can even consider this action in light of all the violence in the schools these past years is deplorable. I have lived in Halton City for eight years and for the first time in a long time, I'm ashamed to say so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geltmeyer. I'll open the floor up now to anyone who would like to, to address this. Mr. Lewis, if you will, give us your name and address for the record and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jake Lewis. I live at 4600 Savelle here in Halton City. I, along with our parents and grandparents of our children in our schools, are very concerned when we read in the Star Telegram, "Where this council may remove our police officers from our schools in Halton City. Where else can they better be used where the drugs are prevalent?" I watched recently on the National Geographic, "Where a little deer, African deer, helpless, was hiding in a fawn in the grass for camouflage purpose." Wild dogs were out there looking, knew what was going on. They spotted the little fawn and they attacked it. The mother, the mother deer ran between the deer and the, the little deer and the wild dogs trying to draw attention away, trying to protect that helpless fawn. And I thought about our children, the same analogy. Our children are helpless, they're innocent and yet we have jackals, we have drug dealers, we have criminals in our society preying, P-R-E-Y-I-N-G, on our children and yet in the name of budget constraint, we chose this as an area to possibly cut. We read where two councilmen made comments that this may be necessary. Okay, for this reason, I would ask our council to reconsider this action. We recently saw where this council recognized some of our school officials who are doing a good job and I heard later in the meeting when I was asking for tax relief along with the mayor, for our senior citizens, the same council, when asked about giving some tax relief, diverted the attention to the BISD for the tax rate. The tax rate is frozen in the BISD for senior citizens. It is not for the citizens of Halton City. Now, I hear before I come in here this afternoon that it is the BISD's responsibility, let them fund it. We should not be debating between our two taxing entities, the safety of our children. We're a taxpayer in the city, we're a taxpayer in the BISD. Now, if it comes to it, I would be willing to place a voluntary contribution on our water bills to help keep these reserve officers here, or these resource officers. So, if we're going to have to do any cuts, I believe that any person in here, including this council, can find ways to cut rather than cut protection of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next speaker. Mr. Rumball, if you will, give us your name and address for the record and you have five minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is G.A. Rumball. My residence is 4229 Joy Lee Street, Halton City, Texas. Gentlemen, I have a tape in my hand. The name of this tape is Choices for the Future of Halton City. This tape was done in putting this Crime Control District together and this taxing entity together. Matter of fact, one of the councilmembers is sat on that particular board at that time which tried to do it. This tape says that if this is passed, this will fund a school resource officer, a second school resource officer is what it says. It goes then to quite a few things that they say that this will do. And I have a lot of time seeing where some of this stuff is done that I hear on this tape that this city made to the citizens of this city. And we're under a budget crunch, fine. I can, I can, I can understand that from the word go. But I see a budget crunch on one side and I hear the council saying, okay, let's do a charter election. I hear figures from $6 to, to $6,000 to $30,000. I don't care if it costs a dollar. If we're under a budget crunch and we're laying off people, we don't even be doing an, an election for anything. We just done one two years ago. We don't have to go back and do this again. There's better times to have a charter election than to do it this year considering where the money is at. We're all under a crunch. We want to cut school resource officers, but we, we can come find money to do an election. Doesn't make a lot of sense. But the tape, the city promised the citizens on the tape. And if anyone would like to see it and do it, holler. I'd be more than glad to sit down and make you a copy of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rumball. Ma'am, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Angela McCants and I live at 7109 Iowa Road Drive. That's in Fort Worth. The reason I'm here this evening is because I have a freshman at Halton High School and I'll be brief, there's nothing I can say that's been more eloquent than the people that've come before me. We think, we know, we believe we need a resource officer at Halton High School and the other schools in Halton City. I don't know how it's going to get done, I just know that it needs to be done. So, you make the best decision that you can, but I don't think myself and the people that have come here tonight are going to let it go and we will have a resource officer at Halton High School, one way or another. Thank you.
Will you please give your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Donna McDowell. I live at 3608 Larry Street. I am the PTA president at North Oaks Middle School. I have one child who has gone through the system and two children in the system and I asked their opinions of the officers in the schools and they all three agreed that they do feel safer with them there, that they feel that they do deter crime and that if something were to happen in the schools, that those officers are there to handle it at the moment that it happens. I just ask that you do reconsider this and do keep these officers in the school for our children. We live in a time where we have a lot of children at risk and a lot of times, these officers are their only positive connection with the police force and it really makes a difference with a lot of them and if we can make a difference with just a few, that's, that's enough for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, your name and address, please.
My name is Debbie Anthony. Live at 5405 Vicki. I've lived in Halton City for 39 years. I've attended verbal schools. I graduated from Halton High School. I am currently fourth vice president on one of the largest booster clubs at the high school. We cannot remove these officers from these schools. If you haven't had time, go up there and spend some time at the high school and see some of the kids these officers have to work with, with these teachers. These are kids that have parents that are not involved. They don't do anything with these kids and we have a lot of problems with kids in these schools and those officers are there to help not only the students, they're here to help the teachers and the administrators. And if we take that out, all we're doing is asking for something like Columbine to happen right here in our own city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker. And I want to thank all of you for giving your name and address very clearly. We do need that for the record and for the comments you're making in this regard. Your name, please?
Hello. I'm Diane Dearman. I live at 3305 Tommy Hayes Drive and I've currently lived in Halton City for almost three years. I have a child in eighth grade and a high school student and a junior at Halton High School. I can't say anything that hasn't already been said other than I'm really against removing these officers. My children, when they read that, were just totally frightened by that with everything that's going on and I, I just don't see that that's where we need to make any cuts. Some way, we need to keep these officers in the schools and whatever it takes, I don't really think that's where we need to do the cut with, with all the drugs and violence and everybody else stepping up security all over the country. I don't understand why this would even be considered, but I just want you to know I'm really against it and I hope this is something that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. And again, I want to remind you that if you have any comments to make, not only about the SRO subject, but any other subject related to our budget, you're welcome to do that at this time as well as the tax rate. Okay, am I to assume everyone here who, Ms. Jennings? Yes. And if you would give us your name and address for the record.
Well, I'm here every week.
Well, we know who you are, but just, just for the record tonight and for the benefit of those in the audience who weren't here last time.
My name is Edrina Jennings Smith. Now, I don't get to look at these people, do I? I just have to direct it to y'all. Y'all are an ugly bunch.
You got applause when you said that. Did you notice that?
I understand. Few eight minutes.
There are people that agree with you.
I am an old woman. And this, having to have police officers in school blows my mind. How many of you council members and mayors and COJAC and all of y'all, how many of y'all went to school?
I love my job so much. COJAC and all.
How many, how many went to school with a police officer in the hall? Not a one. What has happened to our society people? Who is responsible for all of this juvenile delinquency? There's not a person in this room that loves children any more than I do. I cannot stand to see them mistreated. I cannot stand to see them hurt. But I don't understand why the city has to offer protection when it should go back into the home with the parents to teach these children. Train up a child in the way he should go and when he's old, he will not depart from it. Is that not, I don't know where it's found, but you ought to know. I just can't conceive why these poor little children are let go like this. Then when one of them makes a mistake and they get ticketed, then they go to Judge Bino and the parents want to kill the judge. I don't understand. And I know I'm running out of time, so I'll do this double time. November the 19th, 1996, I received this. You will wonder why it's only addressed to a mother, but this man's father was dead. It is entitled, "The World's Meanest Mother." She always had to know where I was going and when I would be back. She always wanted to meet my friends and get to know a little bit about them. She was always telling me to clean my room and to take a bath with soap every night. She told me when to go to bed, when to get up, and what clothes to wear. She insisted on manners and respect to my elders and the words ma'am and sir were expected. She made me include my little brother when I went out to play with the guys. She saw that I attended church not only Sunday morning, but Sunday night and Wednesday night. She refused to accept the line, "Everyone else gets to do it, why can't I?" She made me eat things that I hated and told me they were good for me. She expected nothing short of my best efforts when it came to my schoolwork. She told me that someday I would understand, but I knew that was just a line to shut me up. Well, I'm an adult now and I do understand a few things. I know that I have morals and values that I live my life by. I know that I have never harmed anyone, stolen or knowingly caused another person's pain to make my life a little easier. I know that I love my brother and that I cherish the days of our youth though they seem long ago, but they give me such great joy. I know that I have tried my very best to teach my own daughter just a small portion of what I've learned. Who do I have to thank for what I stand for as a man? No other than the world's meanest mother. I will go down in his... I will go down in history being known as the world's meanest mother. But thank God, I have raised a family that stands firm in their convictions and have taught their children how to act in school without having to have a policeman in the halls. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Anyone else like to address the council at this time? Ms. Geltmeyer?
Would this be on the signature of the tax intention card?
No.
No.
No. I have, I believe I have your card in connection with that, and Donna's not gonna let me forget it, and if I should happen to, you remind me again. Okay, anyone else in the audience tonight wishing to speak on the subject of the 2002-2003 budget or the tax rate? And if you would also, may I please give us your name and address?
It's Donna Robinson, 4520 Cripple Creek Road. Times have changed. We're not living in the same days as when I went to high school or when you went to high school. Times have changed. Money is tight. It's tight for the school district, it's tight for the city, it's tight, very tight for the company I work for. No one understands more. What I think is unfair about cutting this SRO out of the high school and the other schools is that we did it after a time, or planning on doing it after a time, that the school district has already approved their budget. You need to strongly reconsider and keep it in your budget. Talk with the school district, let them know what's going on, and I believe that you have. But I asked all the council people to vote to keep this SRO officer at the high school for the safety of our students and the safety of their lives. If they are fearful, they cannot be educated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, I think you want to address us, and if you will, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Anthony, I live at 5405 Vicki Street. I did not grow up in Haltem City, my wife did, she spoke earlier. It's nice, you know, we can talk about parents having responsibility for the kids, but it's not necessarily only the kids' behavior that we're worried about, it's behavior of other people. Just last year, we had a little girl that was attacked going to school. Now, I understand that wasn't on the school grounds, but we have other school districts that have things like that actually happen in the school. I grew up on the west side of town, where it was a small high school, but we had drugs, we had a knife in in the parking lot, we didn't have police officers on the campus. I think it makes a difference to have an officer on the campus. We have a well-behaved school district, and I believe it's because officers are there. You take them out, who do you have to keep the drug dealers from coming in, to keep the gang members from coming in, to keep people from beating each other up within the school on the violence? They're a buffer, they're a visible buffer, they're no different than a police officer driving a car through the neighborhood. They're there, they're seen, and it initiates good behavior. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this subject? Okay, there being none, I will close the public hearing on this item at this time, having to do with our 2002-2003 budget and our tax rate public hearing. The council will not take action on this until we get down to item number ten. And at that time, the council will have discussion. After having listened to your input, a motion will be made, and the council will take some action regarding our budget at that time. We move now to another public hearing. Mr. Palisca, would you like to introduce this item, please? Item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, citizens of Haltem City. The next item is Z11-02, and that is to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of Ms. Carolyn Hill for a zoning change request from the D Duplex Residential District to the SF2 Single Family Residential District on Lot 15, Block 5, El Berry Edition, located on the northwest corner of Creach and Higgins Street, containing approximately .2290 acres of land, locally known as 2001 Higgins Street. Also have the accompanying ordinance, ordinance number O2002-031-15, and that is to amend the current zoning ordinance, and this is the first reading. The site is located on the northwest corner of Creach and Higgins Street. The applicant is requesting a zoning change in order to build a single-family residential structure on the site. The site is currently zoned duplex and is vacant. I list for you the adjacent zoning and land uses. Property will be accessed from Higgins as well as from Creach. A legal notice regarding this public hearing was published in the Fort Worth Star Telegram on August 16, 2002. Property owner notification for all property owners within 200 feet of the site were mailed out on August 16, 2002. Nineteen properties were notified. Staff received zero in opposition and zero in favor. I also formally submit the following attachments, the site map, the surrounding property owner map, information of the surrounding property owners within 200 feet, and the GIS area. The P&amp;Z Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zoning change request from the D Duplex Residential District to the SF2 Single Family Residential District at their meeting on August 27, 2002.
I'll open the public hearing at this time regarding item number seven. Mr. Torres, did you have an issue?
Uh, no, I think we're okay. Something was pointed out, but I think we're okay.
Okay, members of the council, before I open this up to the audience to address the issue as well as the applicant, any questions or comments for Mr. Palisca on this matter? Okay, there being none, thank you, Mr. Palisca. Please stand by, we may have questions in just a moment. Ms. Hill, are you here tonight, or someone representing you? Would you like to address the council at this time, or would you prefer to just be available in the event we have any questions? Okay, members of the council, any questions for Ms. Hill? Okay, there being none. Members of the audience, anyone here wishing to speak either for or against Ms. Hill's request for this zoning change? There being no one to speak on the subject, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we're ready now to move to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, we move for approval of Z-011-02 for approval.
Okay, councilmember Avery.
That's for a second, Mayor.
Councilmember Hurley.
That was for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? If you would, in view of the fact, there is no discussion, if you'll read, councilmember Williams?
Could I get the person who made that motion to read the ordinance number again?
Yes, Mr. Williams, it's Z-011-02, and corresponding ordinance is 0-2002. I'm sorry, 034-15.
Is there gonna be a problem with the agenda item showing 34?
No, the agenda says 34, the ordinance just behind the cover sheet says 34, that is the correct number. It was the cover sheet that had 31 on it that threw everybody off. So we're...
Okay.
Zero thirty-four.
Thirty-four is the number.
Sorry.
Anything further, councilmember Williams?
No, thank you.
We'll take a vote on this, Mayor, and then if you have to speak.
Okay, all right. There being no further questions on this, if you will, register your votes, and that passes by unanimous vote, and I believe our attorney has a comment to make at this point.
Mayor, as a matter of procedure, state law, which has pointed out to me that we forgot under state law to announce the time and date and place where the council will be voting on the tax rate, which is your next council meeting, you'll vote later tonight, but the actual vote on second reading will be at the next council meeting, and we need to formally announce that to the citizenry. If you would do that at this time, that way we would cover the requirements of the state law in that regard.
Okay, is that something I need to announce, or something that what you just said, is that sufficient for the council?
Officially, the council will be voting on the tax rate on second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be September 23 at 7:30 PM in these council chambers.
That is an addendum to item number six.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up at this point. We move on now to the Vista Citizens Forum, and I do have one card, Ms. Carol Worley. And after the Vista Citizens Forum, we'll take a few minutes break, and then we'll come back to the rest of the agenda. Ms. Worley, are you here tonight? Yes, if you would, come forward and give us your name and address for the record. I believe you want to speak to the council on the subject of tough love. And you are Cookie, according to this? Yeah, if you don't mind, have a seat up here, and when she's finished, if you have something you'd like to say on this subject. I want to remind you, and I think when we talked, yes, if you would pull that down, when we talked on the phone the other day, because this is an appearance before the council, it's not a posted agenda item, we will not be able to make any comments or discuss or answer any questions or anything, and you said that should meet your purposes. So if you would, Ms. Worley, your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Okay, my name is Carol Worley, and I live at 5817 Rockport Lane, that is in Haltem City. I'm the Secretary of the Keller Tough Love Group, which is, it's a parent support group for parents with children out of control behavior. It was founded in 1978 by Phyllis and David York in New York City. They were both family counselors, they had three daughters, who ended up in terrible trouble, and they counseled many other children, but they still had these problems in their own family. What we try to do is help parents by giving them support with their children and showing them new ways to make changes within their family, so their children can change. A lot of people get off track, and we just try to help them get back on track. They have, we have over 800 groups nationwide. Keller is less than a year old. They have sixteen groups here in the metroplex, all in all. The Keller Group, we cover North Richmond Hills, Watauga, Haltem City, and Richland Hills. And in less than eight months, we've got about twenty families. So it is growing. We just wanted to make you, the council aware and the community aware that we are there to help those who need it, don't know they need it yet, maybe they'll need it later. And we would invite you to come out, we have meetings every Thursday night at 7:00 PM at the North Woods Church, which is at the intersection of Terrant Parkway and Moose Snow. And we'd love to have them, sorry they have to come, but we'd love to have them, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Worley. And is your name Cookie Exeline?
Yes.
Okay, Cookie, if you would come up and give us your name and address for the record, and I assume you want to speak to us on the subject of tough love international as well?
Yes, I live at 7108 Brookdale Court in Watauga. Carol did an excellent job of explaining what the tough love group does and what support we provide to the parents. And also, we have brought some flyers for anybody that would like to pick them up, and if we could leave them, we sure would appreciate that, that it explains what our group is, how it works, and that we don't tell anybody what to do, we just make suggestions on what avenues to explore.
Can she leave those, can she leave those brochures here?
Yeah, we can take, one of the gentlemen right behind you can take the brochures from you.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you, we really appreciate your time.
Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. As I announced a moment ago, we will take about a ten-minute break and be back by 15 till nine. We come now to the announcements and events portion of our meeting, and councilmember Williams, I think you have a couple of announcements to make.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to announce the, on my lapel up here and the rest of the council members, and the mayor have little blue ribbons, light blue ribbons on their lapels. This signifies National Awareness Month for prostate cancer, and September is the month for that, and we just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, and be sure that you go to your physicians and have that taken care of, it's a very deadly disease, so I just wanted to bring that out. And the other thing I'd like to point out is the Haltem High School, STUCO is having their homecoming parade, September the 26th. It will start at the International Faith Center at 4:15, travel south to Broadway. At Broadway, it'll turn back due east, and it will expire down in the Coliseum down there by the Shannon Center, so anybody'd like to come out and watch that parade, it will start at 4:15, and it's always very highly participated in and has a lot of people come out and watch it, so y'all be sure and come out. The reason we're doing it this early, because if we do it at the next meeting, we'll be telling you about it after it already went by. So that's September the 26th at 4:15, anywhere along Denton Highway is a good place to watch it, or over on Broadway Street. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Jennings, I think you have an announcement?
As a matter of fact, I did. Had a wonderful presentation tonight from the beautification board, and I don't know how they managed to miss this particular item, but they did. Saturday, September the 21st at 9:00 AM is the Trash Bash. They've gone to a lot of trouble here, got them a walk-in fish to advertise this. Anyone interested in participating in the Trash Bash, registration is at 8:30 AM, it's at the Haltem City Environmental Study Center, which is across from Haltem High School in the northeast corner of the parking lot. Believe that's where the band works out most of the time during the day, so it's in that same parking lot there. They would be interested in having anyone that would like to come, there'll be a cleanup of sites throughout the metroplex. After the cleanup, they'll have food and prizes for everyone involved, and we sure would like to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Flynn, Kent Flynn, has an announcement, I think, to make regarding Moon Fest. Speaking of which...
Here he is.
And here's Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to invite all in attendance tonight and at home, watching on TV, to attend this year's Second Annual Mid-Autumn Moon Festival. This is organized by the All Asian American Cultural and Education Foundation. It's gonna be held this Saturday, September 14th, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and it'll be held again this year at the BISD Thomas Coliseum at Broadway and Carson. This event celebrates our wonderful cultural diversity, which is truly one of the strengths of our great nation, and especially is true of this community, as it is one of the things that sets Haltem City apart from our suburban neighbors. This is a really fun event, with cultural foods, programs, and opportunities to learn, so it is also an educational event in an entertaining setting. Last year's event was well-attended, so I'd encourage all of you to come out from 3:00 to 8:00 PM this Saturday, enjoy some mooncakes, see an authentic dragon dance parade, and take part in all the cultural opportunities that are provided. I'll pass out some flyers now, so that y'all can all get the specifics. I'll pass out some flyers now, so that y'all can all get the specifics here.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. And while you're doing that, I'll make a couple of announcements that I have. I mentioned as the council meeting began that this is the week of the anniversary of September the 11th. And I know there are a lot of events that will be taking place this week. Some of us had the opportunity to attend one on Sunday at one of the local churches. And I think several churches in the area are going to be doing some things in their service on Wednesday night that has to do with the events of September the 11th. There are some other events that you might like to be aware of. Our colleagues in North Richland Hills have invited us to attend tomorrow night, 7:30, at the Birdville Fine Arts Athletic Complex, what they are calling a salute to America's spirit, liberty, and freedom. It'll begin at 7:30, and it's to simply memorialize, honor, and pay tribute to the heroes of September the 11th. The United States Army Chaplain Major Brett Cossey will be one of the speakers, and he assisted in the relief efforts from 9/11. The emcee will be Scott Murray from Channel 5. The Texas Boys Choir will be present to sing patriotic songs. And they'll be honoring the local police and fire departments and local veterans. And they're, they have invited us to, to participate in that, so just wanted to make you aware of that. In addition to that, on Wednesday morning of this week, at 8:45 at the Halton Road Park, we will have a brief ceremony there that will be involved, it's being presented by two or three different groups. Be the dedication of a flagpole there at the park in the Memorial Garden. And I'd like to encourage everybody to, to be present for, for that event. Any further announcements are, of events coming up, gentlemen? Okay, there being none, we will move then to item number eight, and that is the senior citizen tax exemption. On August the 12th, in our council meeting, I placed an item on the agenda to consider an exemption increasing from $40,000 to $50,000. The budget impact of that, with 2,258 households in Halton City that are currently receiving senior tax exemptions, would amount to about $103,000 budget impact. And that translates into about $4 a month, about $48 a year, actually $45 a year savings, tax saving to someone who would be fully impacted by that. The reason this is being brought back up tonight and placed on the agenda is because the way the motion was worded at our council meeting on August the 12th. The motion was, quote, "to discuss raising senior citizen tax exemption from $40,000 to $50,000 after the budget had been discussed in August of 2002." So what we're doing tonight is simply a little bit of cleanup. We've left this matter dangling from the previous meeting, and I ask that this be placed back on the agenda in order for us to allow the council to take final action now that we've had a chance to discuss the, the budget for the coming year. Take final action on this, put this issue to bed, and, and move on to other items of, of interest to us here in Halton City. Most of you were here last time when I presented this, and there's no reason for me to go over all of that. You know what my original request was. And I'm simply asking the council tonight, now that we know what the facts are, to give consideration to that. And if we can't do the full $40,000 to $50,000 increase, if we can do part of it, we can go halfway, that would have about a $50,000 budget impact. Now, whether that can be done or not, or whether it's important enough for us to do it or not, as we look at the larger picture of all the things we're trying to do here in Halton City is the issue before the, before the council tonight. One of the reasons I think it's important for this to be discussed is because if it is to be discussed, it needs to be discussed as a part of the budget process. But even more important than that, I think, is the fact that we're getting ready, within this next budget year, to institute a drainage utility district. And that will be an assessment. We don't know when this will be done, don't know how much, a couple of dollars per meter, water meter, or three, four, five, six, I have no idea what that will be. But the point is that our seniors will be impacted just like everyone else. There will be, if and when we assess this drainage utility district, the water bill, on, on the water bill, that, that will show up. And what I'm asking the council to do tonight is simply to, to take a look at the impact of what that can have on some of our seniors. Now, I know we have a number of our 2,258 senior households who take that exemption, that another two or three or four, five dollars a month is not going to make any difference. But we have a number of people on fixed income that are already hurting, that, that it will make a difference for. So, gentlemen, that's the comments I have to make. I'm ready now for council discussion. And if we have a discussion from the council, then we'll take action regarding what the pleasure of the council is regarding this item. Now, we do have two individuals who have filled out speakers cards, who wish to appear before the council. The first of these is Bob Watkins. Mr. Watkins, if you'd come forward at this time and make your presentation, you have five minutes to address the council on this subject.
Bob Watkins, 6140 Blue Spruce Circle, Halton City. About this time last month, this same subject was put on the agenda by the same person with what I hope will be the same outcome. At that time, I presented some facts indicating that the savings per account, 2,258 residents, would come to just under 88 cents per week. But the impact on the, on our city would be a loss of somewhere between 75 and $103,000, depending on several variables. My question was what brought programs or personnel would have to be cut or reduced. I didn't go to the budget workshops, but I noticed in the Star Telegram and heard again here tonight, something about us being unable to fund our school resource officers, so that we could add officers for patrol. That doesn't sound like we have an overabundance of money. At that same September meeting, Mr. Elfrank handed out some forms showing the 33 communities in Tarrant County with comparable facts and figures for each. Out of this list of 33 cities, 24 had an over 65 exemption of $40,000 or less, with nine having an exemption of more than $40,000. The nine cities with over $40,000 exemption are as follows, with the exemption first and the average residential value second. Arlington with a $55,000 exemption, the average retail value is $116,496. Pantigo, $50,000 with an average value of $124,47. Grapevine with a $60,000 exemption, $171,128. Hasslet with a $50,000 exemption, $167,178. Kennedale with a $50,000 exemption, $107,74. Mansfield with a $50,000 exemption, it's $133,705. Bedford with a $50,000 exemption, homes are worth $137,862. Southlake with a $75,000 exemption, houses retail value is $361,81. Colville with a $45,000 exemption, their homes are worth $301,311. As you can see, this is, anyone even, even close to us is, is not in this group. We're, we're being asked to raise our exemption to a figure up there with homes that are worth one and a half to two times as much minimum. Personally, I don't want to receive an exemption of less than $45.58 a year if it means cutting out anything. And don't forget, those living in homes valued at less than $40,000 won't even receive that much. They're already at the limit. I will close as I did last time. As far as I am concerned, all citizens of the United States of America are way overtaxed. But the excellent council members representing Halton City here tonight are not the body who are doing the overtaxing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Our second speaker is Debbie Geltmeyer.
Hello again, Debbie Geltmeyer, 5712 Starlight Drive. With all due respect to senior citizens, it seems to me that the reason Halton City is literally 30 years behind our neighbors in areas such as our library, our fire department, and our pothole streets is because, because of a senior citizen mindset. This mindset has caused us to become a training academy for police officers who move to other cities after we train them because the other cities pay more. Why is this? I have heard about the senior citizens since we moved here eight years ago. These people must not realize that we have one of the lowest tax rates, if not the lowest tax rate, in the mid-cities. They must not understand that when property values go up, everyone's taxes go up, and that is the price we pay to live in a municipality. Do they ever wonder why we have very little new business interest, no big chain restaurants, no development along 820, which would go a long way to fund city services and keep our tax rate low? Perhaps these people who are now senior citizens are the same residents who put a stranglehold on our city years ago by not allowing proactive municipal policies to promote measured growth and development. Look at North Richland Hills, Watauga, and Ullis, for example. Perhaps these are the very same people who complain about everything in Halton City. It seems to me they want all the services, but do not want to pay for them. Unless we stop listening to one small group of citizens, our city will never truly be proud and progressive. I think the request for this larger tax exemption is preposterous, given the ongoing budget constraints and their effect on city services, and I urge you to vote no to their request. I am speaking for many, many of my neighbors and friends in Halton City. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geltmeyer. That addresses both of the individuals who had filled out a card ahead of time to speak before the council on this subject, and so we'll move now to the council. What I might suggest, gentlemen, if any of you have any comments you'd like to make, we'll give everyone an opportunity to make a comment, and then I'll be in line for a motion to take action regarding your wishes in this regard. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I see absolutely no correlation whatsoever between this agenda item and a public utility district. I don't know how they got intermingled. I wish that that had not have got brought up, but then again, I wasn't the one that brought it up, so I will leave that said and go on to my next item. It was determined by the council during budget considerations that there were no funds for this particular item. That was not a secret. Anyone that attended the budget knew that. Placing this item back on the agenda for more consideration, when it was a known fact that it couldn't be done, was strictly a political move, I disagree with that. At this point, I would like to make a motion that we refuse the $40,000 to $50,000 tax exemption for senior citizens in agenda item number eight.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Fowler.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't in line for a second, but I'll go ahead and second that currently.
Okay.
If that's appropriate, and also I'd like to make a statement.
Yes, sir, if you would, please, and then Councilmember Hurley.
As some of you probably are aware, that have been around for a while, I sat on this council about eight years ago for a period of about five years. This is not necessarily a seat that's, that's highly regarded by a lot of people within our community, but I think I can speak for myself, and probably every individual up here, I know I can, that they care a great deal, as well as myself, to come up here and spend the time that we do, and do the things that we do, and put the effort forth. When it comes to budget time, we don't want to make cuts, we don't want to do anything. But I can reflect back on a budget back when I first took office in the early 90s, or the mid 90s, I'm sorry, early to mid 90s. We were about 42, 43 cents per hundred then. We're at a budget rate right now of 45 cents. You know, it's talking about 10 to 13 years, and our taxes have gone up 3 cents over 10 to 13-year period, and yet we're providing police, fire, water and sewer, park and recreation, it goes on and on and on. But this, I get a little frustrated, I'm sorry. The decisions that we have to make up here, though, are very difficult, very, very difficult. We'd like to provide everything for every different person and every different entity in this community. We can't do that. We have, we have to look at the budget as a whole and try to do what's right for the entire community, not one sector or not one segment. That's where it becomes difficult. You know, SROs, we go to that. You know, we don't want to cut SROs. We want the schools to step up. They're able to raise their tax rates year in and year out, 3 to 4 cents, you know? And granted, we need more money for education, but yet we need more money to fight, fight crime, to fight fires, to do the things that we need to do within our community. And yet we aren't able to raise our taxes, and yet the school system has a better opportunity to do that because people are more willing to fund school projects than they are public, public projects with municipalities. For some reason, whatever that case may be, I don't know. You get a great deal of services out of your cities, you know? And I think it's important that we all understand that we don't, we're not up here to cut things and do things. All we're up here trying to do is do the best we can with the dollars that we have, which aren't a lot. And with that, I'll second and hold the rest of my remarks for right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Hurley.
Mayor, I had a comment to make, but I think at this time, it's unnecessary. I support Councilmember Jennings.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment before I call for the vote? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I really should discuss this or not, because I voted against it in the last meeting. I did some serious research on it, asked the finance director to give me some numbers on it back last February. The last February, he didn't know what kind of impact it'd have on the city. I knew we had a lot of services, they're going to be hurting at budget time, and to keep those services up, I knew it wasn't feasible to be able to give that. Halton City has been given $40,000 tax exemption to senior citizens 20 years or better. I would like to wave the magic wand and say, no senior citizens pay any taxes at all. I think Mr. Lewis would like to do that, too. He came up a while ago and said that he would like to, yeah, there's a man. He doesn't want to pay any taxes, but he wants us to fund these other things. And we've got an account at the bank up here, and when we go to write a check for something, we've got to have the money in that account. When our employees go out 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning to work on a water main break, we got to pay them. When our policemen go out on police calls, we have to pay them. We can't pay them with a senior citizen debit. Just say, here's a debit, we didn't charge a senior citizen, so we can't, we can't pay you. To get the quality officers, like Ms. Geltmeyer said, you got to pay, you got to pay money. We've got our pay up to where it's better than what it was four, five years ago. We're keeping officers. We cut the Port Police Department, I don't know the chief's here, but we slaughtered his budget this year. And it wasn't anything personally against him, it just, we had to cut back, the money wasn't there. We did not want to not put the SRO officers in the school. We just wanted to share the funding or have the funding put to where it was. This $40,000 to $50,000 increase is nothing but just a deal to agitate and aggravate the senior citizens. I went down to the Senior Citizen Center. Some of the council members go down there on a frequent deal, and I went down there back at the last council meeting and polled the senior citizens. Told them exactly what was, George Fowler, I saw him back here a while ago, he was down there at that, he's, he's part of that center down there. And I think I gave a pretty unbiased speech on what we had. We took a vote. The vote was 75% to leave it like it is, 25% to raise it to 50,000. So I think when you go to the people that are involved and ask them, and they tell you to three to one their opinion on it... you to three to one their opinion on it, and I've even spoke to people as late as this past weekend about it, and they feel the same way. They don't mind paying that little bit of extra to ensure that they get the services they need. So I'm still going to vote against this because I didn't vote for it the last time.
Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, gentlemen, if you would register your vote, you heard the motion and the second earlier, and that motion passes by unanimous vote, and what we have done with that is say, leave it like it is, and the council's taken action on this, and it's time for us to move on to, to the next subject, and that is item number nine. Mr. Torres, would you like to introduce item number nine for us, please?
I would like to make a couple of brief comments before there's some discussion on this ordinance. First of all, this is the first reading of two required readings toward the approval of our tax rate. Early on in this budget process, which really began back about three, three and a half months ago, it was the opinion of this council and staff that the tax rate needed to stay where it is. And as we began the budget process, our mindset was to create a budget for next year that involved no tax increase. And that is what has, that is the document that was recommended to the council, and after several budget workshops, that is what we have before us this evening. I think, I think the council feels like there's a lot of things out there that we'd like to fund, but, but we feel like we need to hold, hold the tax rate the best we can. The school district, their situation's a little different, and they can't always hold, hold back, but we're in a position now where, with some careful spending and just trying to get a little better control over what we do and thinking about resources and where we place things, we felt like we could go again another year and keep the tax rate where it, where it is this year. And the, the current rate is forty, point four five five seven five, and that's what is found in this ordinance that's here tonight. I'm going to turn this over to Pat Elfrink, our finance director, and he's going to address a few more specifics within the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. What you asked me to illuminate upon a little bit was, this particular ordinance which sets the tax rate does so by setting the rate into two different pieces. The first piece of that, in Section Three of the ordinance, specifies the city will use nineteen point two oh seven cents of that tax rate to pay off our debt, the debt that we have borrowed in the past for various capital improvements. That nineteen point two oh seven cents per hundred will generate two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for the payment of debt service. The remaining part, then, of the tax rate, twenty-six point three six eight cents, is what we refer to as the operating and maintenance portion of the tax rate, and it will generate another three million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, for a total of five million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. However, I think it's pertinent to point out, and I know that seemed like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, the total general fund budget that's being proposed is in the neighborhood of fourteen point three million dollars. And I just want to point out to this body and to the public that the tax rate alone by far does not generate all the revenues that we need to operate the, the government. We have a sales tax of a little over four million dollars. We have franchise fees from the electric utility, the gas utility, and other public utilities in the neighborhood of three and a half million dollars. We have court fines and fees, a little over a million dollars budgeted in this budget. But I don't want to get away too much from the main point here of what we are doing with this agenda item, which is setting the tax rate at forty-five point five seven five per hundred dollars of value. Is there any questions?
Members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Elfrink on his presentation? Councilmember Jennings?
Question for Mr. Elfrink. Mr. Elfrink, what would a one cent ad valorem tax rate increase generate in income to the city?
I believe the number I gave you at a past meeting was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, or was it a hundred and twenty-eight or a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars?
Very good.
Yes.
Anything further?
No, that's all the questions, everybody.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Elfrink? Okay, I'm ready to entertain a motion regarding item number nine. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve Ordinance Zero Two Double O Two Oh Thirty Five Oh Three with a stipulation that the tax rate be increased from forty-five cents to forty-six cents, and that the one cent be used to fund SRO officers.
Okay, you have heard the, the motion. Councilmember Fowler?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to increase the tax rate to point four six five seven five. Councilmember Williams?
I think the counselor down there's...
Just a clarification, your motion was to increase it to forty-six point five seven five cents.
Per hundred dollar valuation.
That is correct.
Councilmember Williams, did you have anything?
Why do I? Far away.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler, any discussion on, on the motion?
Councilmember Williams, I believe, still had the floor.
Were you there?
No, I, no.
I was catching my breath over the tax increase. I never thought that, that's a pretty good idea. First of all, I'd like to tell the people that came out here to represent the schools and stuff, the PTA mothers, the mothers are involved in stuff, and the lady that said all the things, and I've seen her around the schools, I know she's involved in a lot of stuff. I want to thank you for your time and your interest in the school and coming out and supporting the school. I know, I know just about every face that came up here and spoke. I know that this SRO officer is, has not really got us at odds with each other, but I know that we've kind of snarled at each other on the phone over it, and I do appreciate the ones that I talked to after I told them what we were up against and their understanding on it. I see School Board member Wanda Strong back there. I knew her better as Wanda Andreessen when she was a schoolteacher at Halton High School, and she'll testify that I was probably one of the meanest kids that went through Halton High School in nineteen sixty-six. But I was terrified at her. We had that respect for the teachers back then. I don't know where, I don't know where we went wrong. You know, a lot of the parents today, we're in a society where two parents have to work. Back when I was growing up, a lot of the mothers, you know, they're the June Cleavers, they stayed home, you know, they waited for Beaver to get home. Now, it takes both parents working, and some of them, two jobs, just to make ends meet. So when they put the kid on the bus or put him in the car to send him to school, they have to depend on us to make sure that kid is safe from the time he leaves home till he comes back. We don't want to take the SRO officers out of the school. We don't want to break that safety that they have. I know that, I've talked to some of the students, I went to the school this past week, talked to some of the teachers, talked to the principal, and just the presence of that officer being there makes it all of the students feel more at ease. Pass Philip a note a while ago. I was wondering when we had to start putting the police officers in school, and I think it was when, when you take prayer out of schools, you have to put the cops back in. And, and I think I fully trust our city manager. He's a very competent man. We did a very competent search on him, and I know full well that he'll be able to do what he can to make this work. I will hope the school trustees and the school superintendents will try to do their part because the safety is for the kids and for the community as well. You know, we have elderly people out there in homes during the day, just as we have these children in the school. And it's our job to make sure that all of them are safe. And so with, with what Phillips made the motion, and I don't know how much, what kind of impact that'll have on each tax person, but if that's what it takes to put those SRO officers in school, then that's what we'll have to do. And so I will have to abide with Phil's wishes on it. We're going to do whatever we can to get those SRO officers in. And y'all said Halton High School a while ago, we also have the Shannon Center, that's one of the high schools in the area, and the Shannon Center is just as important to me as Halton High School is. So I appreciate y'all coming out, and I appreciate Phil coming up with this idea. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? Mr. Torres, do you have a comment, or do we need to wait until the attorney gets back, or are there some impacts of this that we need to address before a vote is taken?
Yeah, that's what, we, our finance director and city attorney are going to check with state law to make sure that this can be done. As you know, we've had notices that have been published at a set amount, and now we're looking at going higher than that amount, and we want to make sure that legally we can do that. I have some concerns that we can, and they're going to probably give us an answer in just a few minutes, so maybe...
We can take a recess if we need to. Councilmember Fowler, your comments, and we'll take a few minutes' break until the attorney has a chance to, to look into this matter. Please go ahead.
Point of clarification from Mr. Jennings or Councilmember Jennings, and then a possible substitute motion on my behalf. Mr. Jennings, were you stating that one cent, assuming that, as we were told prior in our pre-council meeting, that the city, that the school district were willing to come to the table with a fifty percent of the funding for this project, or for these school resource officers also? Could this be a combined?
That is a possibility that they will, where that's not an assurity that they will. My thought, in the, in the way I made the motion, that we would generate sufficient funds regardless of what happened at BISD to fund the SRO officers, were BISD to join in partnership with us and, and share the cost of those SRO officers, then I feel that the leftover money from that one cent worth of sales tax should be rolled over into the Police Department for the purpose of funding any additional officers that we could get out of it, since our original idea with this was to have as many officers on the street as was possible. If there is a surplus out of that one cent, then I'd like to use it to, to subsidize the Police Department as opposed to rolling it into the general fund.
And I have to agree with you, I think the importance of the SROs is good, you know, it's good to our community, it's good to our school system, both, it's something that's vitally important. I think it's, it's essential, though, that the school district share in part of this. You know, we're, we're asking our citizens to provide, you know, pay our taxes to our community, and then we pay taxes to the school system, and then we're asked to place police officers back into the school system, so we're being double taxed on police officers. My, my point during this, during the budget session was, you know, we told the people back with the Crime Control District and the CDC money and the things that we've done, we told the people that we were going to get out, and that's part of the reason that I ran. When I left office, we had five patrol officers on the street at a time. We currently have five patrol officers on the street at a time. One of the big items that I would have liked to have seen us change, and I feel like that we're making progress in that way, is to put more police officers on the streets to protect us better, you know, and that's something I'm going to continue to fight for. And if it, that's part of the reason that, as a, as a body during the budget session that we talked about this, was to pull these three officers out of the street, or out of the schools, allow them to still cover the schools, but also be on our streets at the same time. That would provide protection for both our citizens and our schools, and our schools' children also. I would be in support of that, assuming that the school district does come forward and produce maybe fifty percent of the funding, as had been mentioned. Is that, from your understanding, Mr. Torres, what they had initiated?
Well, there's been some discussion about the possibility of, of some sharing of costs. Certainly, no decision could be made at staff level, it would still have to go back before the school board, and I have no idea what their feelings were. But earlier this morning, we provide this, provided the school district some cost estimates as, you know, for those various SRO officers, not just salary, but total cost. We've assigned police vehicles to those officers, there's a good amount of training that's required each year for those officers, equipment, total expenses is what we're looking at here. And we have provided you copies of it.
Yes, sir, and for anyone that would like to see these, these are the costs at Halton City for the SROs, which is approximately two hundred and four thousand dollars and some change. So as you can see, it's not something that we want to, we want to necessarily cut, but we feel like that it's important that the school district step forward and provide some of the funding for this also, because this two hundred and four thousand dollars is, almost two cents on our tax rate, that we can't go up just to provide one service for our community. If this weren't the case, we could put two hundred and four thousand dollars in street improvements, other public safety areas, but if we keep this, which I don't necessarily disagree with, we have to understand that the school district, I personally feel like, needs to share or participate in part of these costs, and I would encourage them heavily to do that.
Anything further? Councilmember Fowler, Councilmember Avery, and then Councilmember Williams.
Okay, I do have a question, Mayor. This is probably for our city manager. How many private schools do we have located within our city limits?
I'm not sure I know. I don't know that I've been here long enough. Three or four, I would assume, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
Glenview.
Bethesda.
Glenview. I know we have Glenview and Bethesda.
Someone from the school system?
There's another one up on Dent Highway, First Baptist, Halton City.
Right, so that's...
And one right on the edge of Halton City, right before you get to Watauga on Dent Highways.
Okay, so we have three.
Did you have further questions? Go ahead with that.
Okay, so we have three, basically. Are they providing currently with SRO officers?
No.
And why is that?
They have prayer.
There's never, there's, there's never been a request, to my knowledge, from them for us to provide officers in the school.
Now, when there is a request, are we going to provide these facilities with SRO officers? Providing BISD with SRO officers?
That's a decision y'all would have to make.
I would presume that if this council does it, if this council opts to provide BISD to continue supporting the, the SRO officers, we would have to, we'd be obligated to do the same for those, correct?
That's some assumption that could be made, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have Councilmember Williams, and then Councilmember Jennings, and then Councilmember Hurley, lights on, and they were turned on in that order, so we'll honor them in that order. Mr. Attorney, is there anything you need to say at this point in, in the discussion?
Mayor, let me clarify some of the issues that the finance director and I were trying to address. Under state law, we are required to go through certain procedures in order to adopt the tax rate, and one of the procedures is that when the council is going to adopt the tax rate that, that the state law says exceeds a hundred and three percent of the effective tax rate, or what's known as a rollback tax rate, and all that's, I know is somewhat confusing, but these are, these are determinations made in the statute. When we are going to adopt a rate that exceeds those dollar amounts, then we've got to publish notice in the newspaper and have the council take a record vote at a previous meeting, which you've done, we've complied with all that. But the effect of the, these statutory requirements is, once you take a record vote and publish this in the newspaper, you cannot vote on a tax rate that exceeds that unless we go back and, and revote it and republish the notice to the public. So at this point in time, my understanding from talking with the finance director is that the record vote that the council took was for a forty-five point five seven five cent tax rate, and that's the maximum rate that the council can adopt tonight as a part of this particular action item. If the council wants to consider a higher rate, then we need to go back and, and publish a new notice and, and come back to this at a later date. There are a lot of issues here because we're supposed to adopt the tax rate in the budget by September thirtieth, which is the end of our fiscal year, and I can address those issues with the council if we do want to go back and reconsider a higher tax rate, but for purposes of this meeting, we need to limit ourselves to voting on a tax rate of no more than forty-five point five seven five cents.
Mr. Torres, did you have, you look like you...
Well, I'm just thinking that if there is some desire to, to exceed that amount, one option certainly would be to not take any action tonight on this ordinance, and we could come back on September twenty-third and September thirtieth, because again, this, any ordinance here will take, require two readings, and that should probably give us enough time to republish first reading... probably give us enough time to republish first reading on the 23rd, second reading on the 30th.
My concern with that is, and city council certainly should comment if he feels we need to, is we do have to have two readings of the ordinance. And if we start the process over again, I'm thinking that the second reading of the, the first reading would then become on the September 23rd.
That's what I'm saying.
Then the second reading would fall into the new fiscal year.
No, the 30th.
No. But the problem is, our charter requires that the budget be considered at regularly scheduled council meetings. And that's something our city council has advised me of in the past, counselor.
The final reading would then follow, fall on a special meeting. And that you're saying is the conflict?
And I'm told that the budget cannot be considered at a special meeting.
And Pat, I need to look at the charter again. We can do that right now, but perhaps we can adopt the budget tonight and on the 23rd and adopt the tax rate on the 23rd and on September 30th. That's a possibility we can look at right now while the council's still debating this.
Can you not go to emergency?
The issue, council member, is our charter and what it provides. As Pat pointed out, the charter does provide that the budget cannot be adopted as an emergency item. Whether or not the tax rate ordinance can, I'll look at.
Are you suggesting it might be well for us to take a five or 10-minute break while you have a chance to...
If you're through discussing it, there may be some more debate by the council. I may have an answer by the time you're through debating, but if you want to put this off, that's fine also.
I don't want to cut it off because I have four lights on. If, with you gentlemen's permission, let me go ahead with the four of you. The first is Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Hurley, Councilmember Jennings, and Councilmember Fowler.
They'll be through before I am. First of all, my question is, for the tax rate, the crime control district had, like Mr. Rumbout brought it up, I think that tape you had to vote was probably from 1995 or '96. There's advertising that they would add another SRO officer. I think the advertisement in the most recent tax control crime, I'd have to refer to Phil on that. I think it just lists things that had been funded in the past. I don't think there was any promises made on there about what would be funded. What I want to ask the city manager is, is it possible that the crime control district would have enough money left in there to fund half of this?
The crime control district budget as presented leaves just slightly more than $200,000 in fund balance. So in theory, there is, there is money there for funding. However, I'd have to caution you about spending down on that fund balance down to some dangerous level. And I think if you drop it down below 200,000, I think you are in a danger zone.
200,000, you know how many? Two. You know if it's 204, 210? I'm sorry, I should've...
It's all right.
Told you they'd have an answer. Fielder, you know.
I know that we, yeah, I know that we tabled a proposal to buy $72,000 worth of Harley-Davidson motorcycles for six months, so I know there's 72,000 extra in reserve there.
218,000. And that is, after we've excluded the purchase of those motorcycles, it drops it down to 218,000.
So in effect, there is 72,000 that will be in reserve over and above the 218.
No, no, 218 represents that 72 already.
Had Crime Control District approved the $72,000 in Harley-Davidson motorcycles, would it have brought it back down to like 150?
146, I think it was the number, 140-something. I might caution you also, and again, I'd have to go back and do a little more reading, but there is some provision in the bylaws of the Crime Control District that provides that, because they've already set, adopted their budget. Once it comes to city council, for you to make any change to that necessitates going back to them and having another public hearing, going through the process again.
Well, I know we...
I don't know that that's a decision that could be made by the council tonight to spend some of that money.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if you had the magic hat, the last city manager had the magic hat that he could put the hand in and pull out the money. Is it possible that we could find the hat to fund half of this if we could get BISD to fund the other half?
Two, we're talking two SROs for the city to pay for one of them and the school district to pay for the other?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Would a tax rate increase be needed, I think? Well, I've got the answer. All we gotta do is get BISD to write us a check.
Anything further, Councilmember Williams?
Waiting for the check.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to address a couple of statements made here tonight. I agree with about 50% of the things Ms. Gilmar said tonight. And that was what she had to say about the senior citizens exemption. I do not agree with the statement she made that we should be disappointed with the city council, or we should be ashamed with the city council based on what they're gonna do on this particular item. The time to be ashamed of the city council is not while they're considering something. It's after they've considered it and made a grievous error, that's when you should be ashamed of them. What we're attempting to do here, you're getting a little quick lesson in Budget 101 here. We are attempting to get every bit of the city services that we can out of, out of every dollar that we've got. Someone mentioned a tape tonight about the Crime Control and Prevention District and how that when it came into existence, we talked about funding an SRO officer. Absolutely 100% true. Yes, we did. That's been over five years ago. Bill Clinton used to be the President of the United States, but we are not bound by Mr. Clinton's philosophies or what Mr. Clinton wanted to do for the United States. He's not the President any longer. We have to go with what present administration says, just as the city of Halton City has to go with what present administration says and does. Would it be an error to remove those officers from our schools? You bet it would. Yeah, times have changed, there's no doubt about it. It's not like it was when I was in high school. There's kids out there that are afraid. I've had parents call me, this is probably the second or third time in my three and a half years, that I've had someone call me at home that was so upset about a situation that they just felt like they could not let it go without making their voice heard and let me know what their concerns were. And I've got to admit, I don't have any children in school here right now. I pay my, I pay my taxes just like everyone else does. But nonetheless, I'm charged with the public safety of the entire city of Halton City, and that includes our children. Heaven forbid that something happened in Halton City like happened in Columbine. Would a single SRO officer in Halton City be able to stop something like that? I don't think there's anybody out there that thinks that's possible. Could he have reduced the damage had there been an armed officer there? You bet. You bet. Can we afford not to take that step? No, we can't. Now, fortunately, United States are, unfortunately, the United States, however you want to look at it, we're blessed with a rather cumbersome legal system that tells us what we can and we can't do. In this instance, I've been told by the city attorney that it is very likely that we will be unable to raise the tax rate at this point, having already set the tax rate. If that's so, then so be it. Then it's incumbent upon us to find some other way to fund this SRO officer. If it takes a combination of crime control and prevention district funds, taking something out of, out of city funding, and in all hopes that the BISD can, can come in and help us fund some of this, then that's what we need to do. That is our job here. It's our job to come up with an answer. There's plenty of questions that we have to come up with an answer for, but I don't believe that there's any that's come before this body that's any more important than this. I was quoted earlier tonight talking about how everybody has their hand in the till, or everybody wants some of Halton City's money. Yeah, I said that. But nowhere in the, in the Star Telegram or any other media did you hear me say I wanted to pull those officers out of that school. That is not what I said. And if somebody's telling you that, they're a liar. Based on the information that I've got here tonight, I don't believe it's gonna be legal for us to increase the tax rate. So I will withdraw that motion if Mr. Fowler will withdraw his second. And I would ask at that point that we go with alternate Plan B and attempt to find our own funding from the Crime Control and Prevention District, the general fund, and help from BISD.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Fowler, he asked the question, would you be willing to withdraw your second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Do you have the floor to comment on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hurley actually had checked in first, but you will...
I will withdraw my second.
Okay. We need to take care of that little item before we go on. Mr. Hurley, the floor is yours.
I think we're between a rock and a hard place, and we're just going around in circles. Legally, we don't have the time to go back out and advertise to exceed the rollback rate. Time is critical, and I think it's a question of whether we fund the SRO. We'd like to fund the 10,000 of the senior citizens and do a lot of things, but you can't be everything to all, all the causes. You have to draw the line somewhere on a budget. And I think the city manager's presented us a good budget. And all I can say is, if he has to come up with the money out of the general fund someplace, see where else he can cut on services or someplace like that, to fund these SRO officers. Because if it's so vital that our citizens feel like we must have it, maybe they can do without some other service.
Anything further? Councilmember Fowler, and then Councilmember Henderson, Councilmember Markham.
City manager and I had made comment in the, in the last recess about the council getting back together and looking over the budget and refamiliarizing ourselves with some of the things in here to try to figure out something. Personally, I feel like that it's, it's our duty to do that. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here, and I'll tell you right up front, I'm not going to guarantee you that we can fund SROs. All I will tell you is that I will put the time forth that the city manager and the rest of this council deems necessary for us to come back and have another meeting and do what we can to fund them. I would be, I would be in a much better position to support this if the school district were to step forward in the next few days and say, hey, we're willing to support at least 50% of it, and if y'all would support 50%, then I feel like that that's fair. But I don't feel like it's just for us to just ask to protect just our school system whenever we have citizens all over town also that we have to, have to protect. And that was our intent, was to come out and provide more people on the street, put more officers on the streets to protect all of our citizens. And I realize the importance of our school system. I graduated from Halton High School myself. We didn't have to have, we didn't have to have a police officer in there then. And it's sad that they do now. It's sad that our kids have to grow up in that environment, that they can't just go to school and have fun. But that's, you know, that's what's necessary is somewhat to have school resource officers, and that's kind of the direction that, that our, our general public has gone over the last five or 10 years in the school systems. But I feel like it is, it is very important for our school district to step forward and provide part of the funding for this also. I'll do everything in my means to, to provide the funding necessary on our part for at least 50% of this, if the school system can come up with a way to fund the other 50%. I will do everything in my means individually to make sure that that happens.
Anything further?
No, sir.
Our attorney has come back in, and I think we'll go ahead, though. Councilmember Henderson and Markham, your comments, and then we'll get to, get to the attorney for whatever he may, whatever input he may have. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Are you in line for a second to Phil's motion?
I believe he just withdrew a motion, did he not? I may have missed it if he took that.
The current rate.
He withdrew one and made a motion to accept the current rate.
I don't guess I made that very plain. I withdrew the original motion to increase the tax rate and to go with the, with the standard rate that we'd already set.
Okay, I failed to pick up on it.
Well, I failed to make it clear, that's my fault.
Okay. And Councilmember Henderson?
I'm in line for a second on that. And two, I would, haven't spoke much on this item tonight, and my sentiments are with Trey's, Councilmember Fowler's. It's not our intention to pull SRO officers out of the school. We know that they need to be there. But it is our intention to, to get 50-50 funding from BISD. I personally do not feel we need to fund this 100%. And it's not our intention, or this board's intention, from the meetings that we had in, in budget session, to fund it 100%. We need help funding, just like they need help funding. They went up on their taxes for, 4, 4, 4, 4.7, 4.5, whatever it was. And, you know, it generates quite a bit of money. I realize their budget's set, and I realize that their hands are tied. But as John has mentioned in the past, you know, we had a city manager here at one time that would wave, wave his magic wand, reach his hand down into a hat, and pull out some funding. We might need to see that from, from our other taxing entity. And, and I will second Phil's motion, and I will sit here tonight, and if it is legal to have a tax raise, I will vote against it. I think the city does not need a tax raise to fund an SRO officer. We do have funding in the current budget, and I think we can fund 50% of, of the two officers that are, that are slated to be in patrol now. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My original intent was to second Phil or Councilmember Jennings' motion. A lot has been said, and certainly I, I don't think I can add a whole lot to what's been said, but I will further what has been said. This council's worked very hard, very diligent, and always has. To do what is right for everybody. Senior citizens, young people, everybody. Put as many police officers on the street as possible. Put as many firemen on the street as possible. Fire trucks cost 6, $700,000. Somebody's gotta pay. They don't give them to us. The SRO, SRO officers, this council doesn't want to pull them out. But what we do want is cooperation. Just a little bit of cooperation goes a long way. You meet me halfway. That's all this council asks. And if Mirdle can't do that, then I think we're all in trouble.
Thank you, Mayor. Any, Councilmember Williams?
I just, we're fixing to bring this to a close, I think. And I do want to thank trustee Strong and trustee Dunn out there for sitting through three more hours of meetings. I know they've already done their budgets and stuff. And I know they got sincere interest in the city and in the deal. And I'd like for this, regardless of how this turns out, I'd like within the next year before we do our budgets next year, is possibly suggest a workshop between the BISD trustees and the Halton City officials. And that way, when we do get ready to do our budget, we'll be online with each other and we'll know where we're at. Instead of one of us doing the budget and the other and fighting back and forth, I think it'd be better if we'd come together and have a workshop.
Mr. Attorney, anything you need to put into the discussion at this time?
I don't believe I need to make comments based upon the fact that we've got a different motion on the table now. With that motion, I don't think there are any legal issues. The council needs me to elaborate on other alternatives, I'm glad to do that, but I think the issues that finance director and I were looking at are being resolved by this new motion.
Okay, we're about ready to take a vote on the motion on the floor. Before we do, Councilmember Fowler?
I have a quick question. Mr. Jennings, were, you assuming that we're gonna, or Mr. Henderson, both, we're going to have a workshop, maybe sometime this, within the next week or two? Go over some of this, try to find the funding?
I'm assuming that the city manager will get in touch with BISD and determine, number one, if they are willing to partner in this. If they are not, then we're gonna have to have this workshop you're talking about. If they are, I think we will be able to squeeze sufficient funds from what we have in order to... order to do that without calling a special meeting, but, uh, until we hear back from BISD, I don't think that it would be prudent to set one at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, uh, Councilmember Williams? And then I'm gonna call for the motion after, uh, Councilmember Williams finishes.
And the city managers sitting here have conversations between each other. Uh, once this comes about, uh, in two weeks, we have a special meeting on workshop, or interview on a Saturday. Possibly if we need to, we can publish that as a meeting that day and do that either prior to or after the, uh, interviews on the employee.
It's a good idea, John.
Would that be all right?
It's a good idea.
September twenty-first, we have a scheduled, uh, Saturday morning, uh, special meeting.
And we could use our time more wisely that way.
If we had one candidate pull out from that, so we should have time.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, any, any additional thing before I call for the vote?
No, ma'am.
Uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had extensive discussion as we've agonized and wrestled with this issue of the budget and, uh, particularly the SRO officers. We're ready now to vote. If you will, gentlemen, register your vote, and it passes unanimously, uh, to leave the tax rate at, uh, at its current level. We move now to item number ten, and Mr. El, uh, Mr. Torres, I believe you have some comments before Mr. Alfred makes his presentation on this item.
Uh, this item, Mayor, is also the scheduled first of two readings, uh, for the approval of the fiscal year budget that, uh, begins October first. Kind of discussed, uh, this, all these issues quite a bit. I don't really have anything specifically to add to this unless y'all would like to, to have me address some part of it.
Mr. Alfred, do you have a presentation you wanna make? Are you wanting to be available for questions? What, uh, what is your pleasure?
My pleasure is whatever the council would like to have, actually. I don't wanna extend this any more than we have to, but we do have a, a, a very important issue here, a fourteen and a half million dollar budget. We did have a full-day workshop on August the twenty-fourth, and we were working at it at the library on, on the twenty-third, or the twenty-second, the Friday before that Saturday workshop. Uh, during that workshop, there were a number of changes that were suggested, that were requested, there were some oversights that were found and such like that. Those oversights and changes come to less than one-tenth of one percent for the general fund. It's a total of about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, both in increased expenditures that were found, but also at the same time, we found opportunities to reduce expenditures by an equal amount, so the net effect on the general fund is actually zero. Uh, we did have a meeting of the Economic Development Corporation, uh, a week ago, where they approved their budget and made a recommendation to this body. Uh, there was a change, uh, made there, uh, with regard to how we're going to fund the shortfall, uh, to pay for the, uh, repair to the creek bank at the Buffalo Ridge Park. That repair, which is in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars, is gonna be shared by the water fund and the, uh, Economic Development Fund with hopes that it will be paid back over a five- or seven-year period. Um, we did also set up a separate fund, a new fund, to account for the expenditures and the bond revenues to renovate the senior center. Uh, that is approximately a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project. We expect to sell bonds for that project, uh, late March or early April of next year. We anticipate that approximately one hundred thousand dollars of that project will be expended in the next fiscal year, and it would be finished up in the fiscal year following that. Uh, don't have anything else to add at that point.
Uh, gentlemen, questions for Mr. Alfred? Any comments on the material he's presented? Uh, there being none, I'm in line for motion regarding item number ten. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. Moving to pass ordinance number zero dash two thousand two dash zero three six dash zero three.
Okay, we have a motion regarding this first reading. Councilmember Henderson, I believe you had your light on next.
Just for a second, Mayor.
Have a motion, a second. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, uh, Councilmember Hurley.
Uh, one thing real quick that the, our Finance Director forget to make mention to is the fact that during this budget, we, uh, approved accelerated street maintenance, uh, projects and funds for those, also the, which he had mentioned, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars' worth of renovations to our senior citizen center, uh, employed some employee pay raises, and there's a lot of good things in this budget, so I, you know, I, I know they don't wanna sit there and, and beat this thing to death, they've done it, but they've done a good job in working on the budget and trying to do things across the board for all citizens. You know, we, we've done some improvements in the parks, and, and you, you're seeing a lot of great things happening in our community right now, let's don't lose sight of those. Let's all look at all the street maintenance repairs that have gone on more now than's been done in my lifetime, and I've lived here my entire life. So there are a lot of great things going on right now, let's don't forget about all those things.
Councilmember Hurley?
That was for a second, Mayor.
Okay, uh, we have a motion, a second. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, register your vote, please, and, uh, item number ten passes by unanimous vote. Councilmember Jennings, I believe you placed, uh, item number eleven on the agenda, would you like to introduce that at this time, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, the agenda item number eleven is for council consideration to place the animal, uh, shelter on the water bill as a possible source to, uh, donate revenue to. Uh, we'd just like to get it added as one of the, uh, possible places that citizens could, uh, send their fifty cent donations. Uh, put this on the agenda tonight to see if, uh, council is in agreement or opposition so that we could, uh, instruct city staff what to do on that.
Okay, uh, members of the council, any questions for Councilmember Jennings on this, uh, on this item? Uh, okay, there being none, I'm ready to receive a motion regarding item number eleven. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we, uh, add the animal center donation to the water bills for contributions.
Okay, Councilmember Jennings?
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Markham?
Just, uh, one little note there, I think we will be advertising this on, in the city newsletter that, that we, people can be able, able to do that, can we not?
That, that is correct. Uh, there'll probably be a multitude of places that will place and promote this. Uh, the newsletter, uh, we discussed earlier today in a staff meeting, uh, the possibility of putting together a brochure that would be included in the water bill so we could introduce the, the, the issue to, to citizens, as well as make a plug for the various other donation, uh, areas that can be done through the, through the water bill. Uh, just for the benefit of people here, each one of those donation areas, and I guess there are three or four other, uh, four other, uh, donation potential areas, and we're generating somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars a year just through those donations, and it, and it's money that goes to, to, to good use, and, and we, we purchase a lot of tangible things. We're not paying for salaries out of it, but we're, we're trying to put it to good use in visible areas, so it, it's a good cause, and, and if we can get people to donate, uh, we'll be that much better off.
Councilmember Jennings?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that I, I didn't make this as part of the motion, but I would like to instruct staff to do this as expeditiously as possible. I know there was, uh, one of our citizens here tonight that was looking for a place to, uh, put some of his money on the water bill, and I sure would like to oblige him.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on the motion before us regarding item number eleven? If you will, register your vote, and that, uh, item number eleven passes by unanimous vote. Item number twelve is resignations of board members. Uh, any resignations to be ratified tonight? Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resignation from Marvin Clayton on the minority board. Uh, Mr. Clayton's had to leave, uh, he's moving out of the city, it's, uh, not causing any problem with the board, it's just he has a job that's taken him elsewhere, and he's wanting to resign, so I submit that resignation to Marvin Clayton.
Okay, if you will, gentlemen, register your vote to ratify this resignation, and, uh, that, uh, was ratified by a positive vote from each member of the council. Any further resignations of board members? What about appointments and reappointments? Any to be made tonight? Uh, there being none, uh, the matter of attendance requirements has been met, and, uh, we're about ready to go into executive session. Before we do, I wanna say, and I wanna give the other members of the council an opportunity to say anything, uh, they might like to, to the citizens who are here and those who are watching. Budget process is painful. It always is, it always will be. There are some tough, tough decisions that have to be made, and I can assure you, this council, uh, earns its ten dollars per meeting in the course of, uh, addressing the budget and getting it approved and having to make the tough decision. You have to say no to a lot of things, you'd like to do a lot more than you can, but you're always restrained, uh, or under the constraint of, uh, of the resources you have available. I can assure you that, uh, this staff and this council has worked diligently to be responsible. We've spent a lot of hours, uh, I think council has about ten hours, uh, each one of us into this in a couple of budget workshops. We have, I don't know how many, uh, our staff has put into it, but it has been a whole lot, and I feel very positive, I feel very good about the budget as presented and, uh, the tax rate, and, uh, I'm excited for Halton City as we can move forward, and like Councilmember Fowler said, we have a lot of good things going, and you're gonna see a different face on Halton City in the next five years because of some of the things we're doing now. And this council is making a diligent effort to be responsible stewards of, uh, the money that's been entrusted to us and the programs by, by the people of Halton City. And I just wanted to say thank you for your interest in Halton City, for your input into this process, and for your support that we're asking for as we seek to implement this, uh, this budget, uh, that we'll be approving on second reading a couple of, uh, weeks from now. Uh, other members of the council, any comments you'd like to make? Okay, there being none, we will move now into executive session as authorized by section point oh seven one, point oh seven two, and point oh seven four. And the time is four minutes after ten, and we'll return in open session to take any action on any item discussed, uh, that requires action. Uh, gentlemen, the time is twelve twenty-two, we are reconvening in open session. No action to be taken on any items discussed in executive session, therefore we stand adjourned.
Night, everyone.